Good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming down and welcome to Springfield City Hall. I'm gonna just give it a second while focus gets us up and running. Thank you, Hosei. Welcome to Springfield City Council Chambers. We have a regular meeting tonight scheduled for seven o'clock, but beforehand, as is the council's custom and practice, we have the high honor of honoring several community leaders and young people that have achieved substantial greatness in many different fields. So I know that we've got a variety of wrestlers here tonight for proclamation sponsored primarily by Counselor Click Bruce and Counselor Tracy Whitfield. And we're gonna get started with some of those. I know that we've got some, but not all of the coaching staff here, so we'll defer to Counselors Whitfield and Click Bruce for who we'd like to start with, but we're really excited to have you all down here tonight for this honor and look forward to wishing you a sincere congratulations on behalf of the city. So, Counselors Whitfield or Click Bruce, whoever would like to start?
Good evening, everyone. I'm City Council Tracy Whitfield, Vice President of the City Council. I have had the pleasure of knowing Ahmad Coach Hakim, I don't know what you want to call you, but Hakim, Coach Hakim, because I've known him as Hakim for his entire life. And he told us about the wonderful wrestling team that Putnam has. And I was like, really? And then he started talking about the wonderful young women that's on there. And I'm like, go, because I'm a boxer. So I love that for y'all. But right now, I just want to recognize the coaches, because without you all, none of this is possible. And so I know that it's sometimes hard for parents to let their young people go, but when they have coaches like you all that they can trust and that is there for their children, it makes it a bit easier. And so I do have proclamations here for the coaches as well, and I will read them. The City of Springfield City Council in recognition of the Springfield, wait a minute, in recognition, the Springfield City Council is pleased to honor and recognize Coach Ahmad Sharif on his contributions to the sport of wrestling in the city of Springfield, April 28, 2025, attested by our City Clerk Gladys Oyola Lopez and sponsored by City Counselors LeVar Click Bruce and Tracy Whitfield. So this is for you. And if it says the same name, I'll just say the name, Coach David Gale. I know Coach Xander Chapman cut the paper right now, but that's for him. And, oh, sorry. And Coach Damian Figueroa. There's somebody else back there. Is that a coach?
Yes.
And what's his name?
Michael Marshall.
Michael Marshall? I'm about to go get you one printed right now, because we didn't have your name on the list. Do you have Michael Marshall in your packet? I'm gonna go get you one, but let's give Coach Marshall a hand also. With that, we normally open it up to the rest of the counselors to say their remarks to you, and then we'll get to the next section of proclamations. Counselor Click Bruce?
Well, first of all, I really want to thank, I'm gonna call him Ahmad. I know it's Hakim, but they're family to me and my family. And I will also be remiss if I didn't recognize his grandmother, Mabel Sharif, who was a pillar in our community. It definitely speaks to what you have done, Hakim, and also, you know, I know you got your tenacity from your dad and also from, it's in you. So first, I just wanted to shout that out, because Mabel was truly, truly a gem to this community. And I think that deserves a hand praise, so hand clap. Yeah, Mabel was just a gem. So Ahmad, Hakim, thank you for even letting us know that this was going on. I think it's crucial that we recognize our student athletes who are doing great work, not only in the classroom, but on the athletic field, or in this case, the mat. And again, to the girls wrestling, you guys are phenomenal. First time ever in the school's history, I believe. That's amazing. That's amazing. So give a hand clap for yourselves. I know we'll talk more about that, I really, but I wanted to point that out, because I don't want to pause for every section. But again, Hakim, thank you for bringing this to our attention. And congratulations to all the coaches, because I know what it takes. I'm a coach myself. A lot of times, you know, you're taking the time away from your families. And it's more than just coaching the sport. It's teaching them life skills. And I know you all are doing that. So kudos to you and your staff, and on doing an amazing job. Thank you.
Counselor Walsh?
Thank you, Mr. President, Council President. I just want to say how surprised I was when I walked into here and to learn that we had a wonderful girls wrestling team. I'm just overwhelmed. And I'm not only impressed by their athletic ability, but I'm impressed by their poise, their decorum. And I'm, as you said, am so proud to know that they are citizens of the city of Springfield, and I wish them well. And I'd like to ask, how many of you have been in the chambers before? How many of you have been to City Hall before tonight? Okay, just a few, because this is one of my favorite parts of proclamations when we honor students. So continued good luck and thank you for coming down. And thank you to the coaches. But how about the parents? Raise your hands, because they wouldn't be succeeding without you guys.
Thank you, Counselor Walsh. Okay, Counselor Allen?
Thanks, Mr. President. I'd like to echo what my fellow counselors said, Counselor Click Bruce and Counselor Walsh. To the wrestling team, I met you before. Great job. Met a lot of people out there. And I think I met some of the coaches. I've been in the community quite a while. And I have to say, I worked at different times on initiatives where Mason Square Health Center was involved, and Mabel Sharif. I knew her, met her many times and knew her. We had a nice vibe between us. And I always thought she was one of the coolest people I met in Springfield. And she was so committed to community work, et cetera. So those of you who are related to her, congratulations. And I did know a Sharif that played for Central High Basketball, Ahmad Sharif, at one point. Is he involved with this crew?
Oh, he's with us.
That's your dad? Nice. He played like with Travis and like not too far after Travis, I think. He was always great. He had great vertical ability, vertical leaping ability. I enjoyed watching him play basketball. So congratulations to the wrestling team, the coaches, and the parents. This is a great honor to have your children doing this well and for all of you celebrating our city of Springfield. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna turn it back to Counselor Whitfield.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one more proclamation to give out to Coach Michael Marshall.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I apologize, I couldn't be there. I now have a nine-year-old granddaughter. But I wanted to say to the wrestlers and to the coaches that this is a great move for the city of Springfield and for all of our youth and adults. And I'm not surprised that Ms. Mabel Sharif's legacy is in our City Hall and is doing this kind of work, because this is what she was all about. So I'm just proud to know that her legacy continues. I thank you all for continuing the legacy. I don't know if she would have known that there were going to be girls wrestling. I would wonder what she would have to say about that. I'm sure she would be very impressed and very happy that her grandson actually is one of the coaches for these teams. So thank you again. Thank you, counselors, for bringing this forward. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Govan and Kat. And now for the next round of proclamations for the wrestlers. Do we have other proclamations to present in that regard, counselors?
All right, thank you, Council President.
Thank you.
I'll just go through these rules that I have here. So the first one, we'll have the coaches to come up to the podium, please. And then we're gonna recognize-
Coaches, come forward, please, to the podium right over here.
Yeah. We're going to recognize the Putnam Vocational Technical Academy, the girls wrestling team. So City of Springfield City Council in recognition, the Springfield City Council is pleased to honor and recognize Putnam Vocational Technical Academy on the occasion of being first, the first all-girls wrestling team to make Western Mass. States and all- Hold up. They did it. They actually did a clean sweep, my understanding. They, Western Mass, they made the states, and they were all state champions the first time in Springfield history as a girls program. So that is commendable in itself. And congratulations on all your hard work and dedication. You know, I'm a guy at heart, but listen, I know I'm a smart man. Female run the world, all right? And you guys are taking over wrestling now? Oh my God. No, but Hakim, you and your staff, is the school, anybody from the school here as far as like administration? No?
I work.
You work? Okay, so got you. Understood. I just didn't know if we need to recognize them. So on April 28, 2025, this is signed by our Clerk Gladys Lopez, who's our City Clerk, sponsored by myself and City Counselor Tracy Whitfield and all the counselors as well. Then I'm gonna move on, because I just want to move this forward a little bit. I have, these are individual girl state champions. They all read the same. I'll read the first one. And City of Springfield City Council recognition, we are pleased to recognize and honor Leanna Watson, individual girl state champion, on this occasion of excelling in the sport of wrestling and reaching the state championship. Again, signed by our City Clerk and also sponsored by myself and City Counselor, Vice President Tracy Whitfield and all the counselors. So we have Jada-
Can we still ask her?
Yes. That's fine. Yes, they were asking. When I call your name, please stand. First person we have is Leanna Watson. Now we have Jada Maya Garafa. Is she here? Not here. And then we have- And then we have Malaney Miles. Okay. And then the last of my proclamations, I'll go through this quickly here. We have the girls team league, All Western Mass All-Stars. So we have a list of student athletes for those making the All Western Mass. When I call your name, please stand. And it basically reads, the girls team, All Western Mass All-Stars, on the occasion of excelling in the sport of wrestling and reaching the All-Star status. Signed by our clerk and also sponsored by myself and Vice President, City Counselor Tracy Whitfield and all the counselors. The first person we have is Ashlyn Ramos. We have Brianna Santa. Charlisse Rivera. I apologize ahead of time if I butchered your name. Isabella Perez. Genyleus Castro. Jada again, J. Maya Garafa. Jo- Joanna Yarns. Joanna. Listen. Carolina Rivera. Leanna Watson. Malene Miles. Sonora Lim. And Storm, that's a great name. Bizarro. And this is the all, this goes to the coach. Yeah. Thank you all for your hard work. Appreciate it. And if you got names, I got you. If you need names. Yep, I got you.
Jennifer Wu.
Faith Liam Melendez. Faith Liam, yeah.
Justine Perez.
Michaela Geetz. Michaela Geetz.
Girls is all set and I'll get you the names. Yep.
I don't know, that was brutal. Good job, Counselor Click Bruce. Just wanted to say, girls rock. Yes. We are extremely, extremely proud because this is like unheard of kind of, right? And you all went out there and killed it, okay? So we are very proud of you for representing Springfield the way that you do. You all came in here looking good too, okay? And we are just really proud and thank you, coaches, for handling them with such care. They are our prized possession and I think this is the first time I've ever seen a female wrestling team. So keep up the good work and great job, okay? All right.
Yes.
Well, however you'd like to proceed, we gotta do the boys team too, right? Do you wanna?
Yes.
Guys, be like this. I want to look at them. Now we're gonna recognize the boys wrestling team. And I'm gonna read the proclamation and then there's an extra special one that I want to acknowledge as well. So in recognition, the Springfield City Council is pleased to honor and recognize Putnam Western Mass All-Stars on the occasion of excelling in the sport of wrestling and reaching All-Star status. This proclamation is on April 28, 2025, attested by our city clerk, Gladys Oyola Lopez, sponsored by city counselors, Levard Click Bruce and Tracy Whitfield and all counselors. So the first one that we have here is Brian Hall. Congratulations, Brian. Then we have Emmanuel Patterson. Kendall Logan. Lucas- Lavoyet. Am I saying it right? Help me out, help me out. How you pronounce it? Lavilet? Lavilet? Okay. Thank you. Sorry about that. Maximus Soto. Think Roman said he's here?
Yeah.
Not yet. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Roman Chapman. So Roman is my special one because I trained with his dad, Will Chapman. That's who I boxed with and we all know that we lost him and I've known Roman since he was like two, working out in the dojo and, you know, you're still strong and you're tough and I'm always gonna be here for you no matter what and I love you so much, okay? You're welcome. Roman also has another one. The Springfield City Council is pleased to honor and recognize Roman Chapman, Western Mass Champion, top three in the state, on the occasion of honoring his commitment and contributions to wrestling in honor of his father, William Chapman.
Is that all the proclamations we have for the wrestlers? Okay. So we would, I guess, maybe invite the coaches to say a few words and then we'd invite you up to take a photo? So, coaches?
Yes. Good evening. I just want to say thank you for honoring Putnam High School and its wrestling program. This year was a big year as far as growth in the program. We set the expectations high and believed in the team's ability to do something great. This year, we linked up with Duggan due to renovations in our own space, but through the process, we formed an even stronger bond that benefited both teams throughout the season, competing in separate divisions. We were one family and through their discipline and hard work, the boys excelled and earned Western Mass honors and a few individual Western Mass championships. And girls earned state and all-state titles as well as competing on the New England and national level. They have set the standard of what the girls in the wrestling community can accomplish as well as earn the respect that they can train hard in this sport as a collective group and work hard and accomplish anything. Given them the vision that both the boys and girls team can work together to achieve greatness, they took that idea and they ran with it. I hope this year has inspired all Springfield, Western Mass and girls wrestling that your girls are reached through consistency and enjoying the journey. If you prepare well, no matter what obstacles come your way, you will always find a way for you and those around you to succeed. That's it.
Beautiful. So if everybody would like to come forward, please, we'd love to invite you up to the dais. We can take some photos together. Girls and boys, come on up. Thank you all again so much for coming out tonight and thank you especially to counselors Click Bruce and Whitfield for bringing these young people before us tonight to be honored. We have a couple of other proclamations this evening. Let me see where Counselor Walsh is. Okay. Counselor Walsh, are we ready to do the next proclamations? Counselor Walsh, are we ready? Thank you. So we have a few other community leaders and honorees to celebrate tonight. Counselor Walsh has our next proclamation and it is to honor- Yes? Sure. You can, please. Counselor Whitfield?
Sorry, I just want to give my apologies to Devron Davis and Mohammed Amid. We're gonna get your proclamations right now.
We'd like you to stand up and be recognized. We will get you proclamations before you get out of here, two gentlemen. The next honorees are Counselor Walsh's. We have an honoree for the Academy Regional Poetry Youth Poetry Slam Group. Counselor Walsh?
Thank you, Council President, and tonight, we not only honor sports, but we recognize people that are great in the arts and in poetry. And it's nice to know we have so much talent in the city of Springfield and in our schools. And I'd like to call up, to be recognized, Azariah Thomas.
Please come forward to the podium.
Who is accompanied here by her parents tonight, if they would like to join her? Okay. So I'm gonna read the proclamation because I think it explains why we are honoring this young student in Springfield. Whereas the Springfield City Council is always to please to recognize local students as they represent their home city and regional events. And whereas Azariah Thomas, Springfield Honors Academy, and Melanie Reavis, who is not with us tonight, Springfield Conservatory of the Arts, recently participated in the third annual Academy Regional Youth Poetry Slam held in Northampton. This slam is more than a competition. It fosters connections, bringing together young voices, audiences and communities through the power of the spoken word. Whereas the mission is to empower the youth of the Pioneer Valley through the art of poetry and storytelling, serving high school poets in grades nine through 12 across Franklin, Hampshire and Hampton Counties. And whereas Azariah and Melanie were introduced to the slam through workshops held at Forbes Library and Smith College and the help of their dedicated educators and parents, working dillages since February. And I believe we have before us an award winner. I believe, if I'm correct, that you placed third in the competition. So congratulations for that. Now therefore be proclaimed that the Springfield City Council hereby recognizes and commends you for your participation in the third annual Academy Regional Youth Poetry Slam, which is quite a mouthful, Annual Academy Regional Youth Poetry Slam, and thanks you for your great representation of the city of Springfield. Proclamation in your honor sponsored by our city clerk and sponsored by myself, Counselor Caterie Walsh and all city counselors. Congratulations.
We'd invite the honorees to say a few words.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I'm so happy to get this proclamation thing. This is super cool. Thank you, Councilwoman Walsh, and thank you for having me. And that's all.
Congratulations. We'd invite you up to take a quick photo with us, please.
Okay.
Okay, thank you again, Counselor Walsh, for bringing another very worthy community member to our attention. We have one final proclamation this evening. Primary sponsor is Counselor Whitfield for Mr. Lawrence Long. And we're just gonna give Counselor Whitfield a moment. I think she's whipping up your proclamations back there, gentlemen. I think she's whipping up your proclamations back there, gentlemen. Okay, so our next and final honoree this evening is also sponsored by Counselor Tracy Whitfield. Counsel Whitfield has a proclamation to honor Mr. Lawrence Long. Mr. Long, if you're here, we'd invite you to come forward, step forward to the podium. And Counsel Whitfield will read your proclamation.
I had a wooza. Okay. Hello, Mr. Lawrence. Good evening. I don't know you personally, but I know your wife Joan for many, many years, and she put like a post on Facebook, and I follow her sometimes, and it said the great work that you do in the city of Springfield, just being a citizen, a resident of Springfield, and you go around and you clean up our city. And I said, wow, just out the kindness of your heart, just out of wanting to keep our neighborhoods clean, you go around and you clean up the graffiti off of buildings in the city of Springfield. That is amazing. So I said, Joan, I want to do a proclamation. And she was like, oh, he's modest. He doesn't like all that publicity and things like that. And I said, but he needs to know that we appreciate the hard work that he's doing to keep the city of Springfield clean, and so we have this proclamation for you. The city of Springfield, April 28, 2025, whereas the Springfield City Council is pleased to recognize Lawrence A. Long, a lifelong resident of Western Mass and a resident of Springfield for almost 25 years, and whereas Larry grew up in the painting business and has owned his own painting and pressure washing company since the early 90s, Advanced Painting of Springfield, working on residential, commercial, and industrial projects, and whereas known for his honest approach to projects and getting done ahead of schedule, many customers have commented on his ability to find creative ways and efficient ways to get their projects done on time. And whereas Larry worked with the city of Springfield in the late 90s when the Business Improvement District was formed, working with the community police liaison to clean up graffiti throughout the city, and whereas, a fun fact, he has removed graffiti from every building in the downtown area. And whereas Larry has worked on other projects throughout the area, including working with property managers to board up broken windows, and accompany assurance adjusters in a lift truck to survey damaged locations after the 2012 gas explosion. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Springfield City Council hereby recognizes and commends Larry A. Long for his continued dedication to represent the city of Springfield the right way.
You can say some words?
Yes, please.
We have other counselors.
Oh, I love to talk. We would love to hear from you, please.
First off, I'd like to say I lead by example, and sometimes it's nice just to lead silently. And so I've taken graffiti off all over the city. Nobody knew. It's kind of nice when nobody knows.
That'll conclude our proclamations portion of the meeting this evening. That'll conclude our proclamations portion of the meeting this evening. The council is now going to change into its hearings meeting schedule, and councilors The council is now going to change into its hearings meeting schedule, and councilors
There's some pretty ugly stuff out there, and I just don't like it in the city of homes.
who are participating remotely, we invite you to change to the link ending in 1-9-1-8. who are participating remotely, we invite you to change to the link ending in 1-9-1-8.
So therefore, everybody, if you do a little bit, we all win. Have a beautiful evening.
Thank you. We'd like to invite you up to take a picture with us as well. Okay, good evening, everybody. Thank you, Josue. I'm going to call this meeting of the Springfield City Council to order. Good evening. Tonight is Monday, April 28th. The time is 7:05. Tonight, we have a hearings meeting with one special matter before the Springfield City Council. Madam Clerk, would you please start by calling the roll?
Counsel Curran.
Present.
Present Counsel Allen.
Present.
Present Counsel Govan. Present Counsel Walsh.
Present.
Present Counsel Edwards. Absent Counsel Davila.
Present.
Present Counsel Brown.
Present.
Present Counsel Whitfield.
Present.
Present Counsel Delgado.
Present.
Present Counsel Santino.
Present.
Present Counsel Click Bruce.
Present.
Present Counsel Perez. Absent Counsel Fenton.
Present. Will the council and our guests please rise? And Officer, I know we've got some young folks who've just walked outside. Would you mind telling them we're about to do a moment of silence? Okay. Tonight's moment of silence is going to be offered by Counsel Davila. Counsel Davila?
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening to all. Mr. President, today I would like to offer this moment of silence to the victim of or beloved Dominican Republic on April 8th of this year in a nightclub called Jet Set, the rooftop collapsed, killing 226 people. It has been a national tragedy that the Dominican people here in the city of Springfield are not only a real integral part of the city, but they're also an important economic engine here in the city, and I thought it would be quite appropriate to today dedicate this moment of silence to our brothers and sisters for the Dominican Republic, who they stand here proudly waving the flag behind me. If you allow me, I would like to say this briefly in Spanish, Mr. President.
Please.
Buenos dias a todos y a todas. Muchas gracias, señor presidente. Hoy día quiero hacer este momento de silencio en honor a las víctimas de la discoteca Jet Set en nuestra hermana República Dominicana, en la cual el techo colapsó matando 226 personas. La comunidad dominicana aquí en la ciudad de Springfield es una comunidad activa y una comunidad importante económicamente. También quiero reconocer que nuestros hermanos dominicanos están detrás de mí y con su bandera muy orgullosamente representando a Dominicana. Muchas gracias, presidente. Those are my words.
Thank you. We'll now honor with a moment of silence. Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, could you please recognize the Counsel in seat number 12?
Counsel Perez.
And seat number five?
Counsel Edwards.
Present.
Present.
Okay, Madam Clerk, first item, please.
First item is collective bargaining agreement ratification for Local 364.
Your microphone, please. Labor Relations. I'm pleased to report that the city and IBPO Local 364 have reached a tentative agreement on successor collective bargaining agreements to our contract, which expired on June 30, 2024. The negotiations began on October 1st, 2024. There were 10 bargaining sessions. The previous contract had expired again on June 30th of '24. There were approximately 411 employees in the bargaining unit. We've adopted a new FTO policy in this contract, and we've agreed that we will pay officers who are FTOs $85 a week while they are performing that duty for a limited period of time, because it only lasts just for a period of time after graduation from the academy. We've moved the recruit pay from the pay plan, and we're just going to pay at step one of the contract. We've agreed that we would work on an app with the union and with our IT department to handle outside details and assignments. We added two days of bereavement leave in the event of the loss of a spouse or child of one of our officers. We would have two more days of bereavement leave to the three that are there. Wage increases are 3.5% each year of the four-year contracts. The first contract covers a period of July 1, 2024, to June 30 of 2025. The second contract covers the period of July 1, '25, to June 30 of '28. And that pretty much sums up the major points of the negotiations. It was a good negotiation between the parties. We did this all at the table. We didn't have any third parties come in and assist us. We had a good exchange of ideas and conversations, and we are pleased to report that we got this done. The union ratified about two weeks ago.
Thank you, Attorney Mahoney. Any comments or questions from the council on the CBA?
Yep.
Okay. Counsel Whitfield?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Mahoney, can you just talk a little bit about the $20 deduction from absent trainees?
Sure, sure. Thank you, Counsel. Yes, what we did is we agreed that we would do $85 a week during the, I believe it's a 13-week FTO program, doing that from memory at this point. But if one of the trainers is absent on one of the days, they take a sick day, they take a vacation day, they're not going to get the full $85 for that week. We would take $20 off for that absence. If they're gone the entire week on a week of vacation, we're not going to give them the FTO program. We're not giving the FTO pay. But if they're there for the full week, they get the $85.
Okay. And then I know we have some retro pay for FY '24 and '25. What does that equate to in dollars?
For FY '25, it's FY '25 would be the retro pay. I don't have the exact dollar amount, but Kathy Bono was at the hearing for the Finance Committee before this meeting, and she has the funds for this year and will not need a transfer, from what I understand. I think it was maybe a million and a half, although I don't recall if that's the exact number.
Million and a half. Do you recall, Counsel Allen?
Counsel Allen?
Yeah, the Finance Committee met on this a couple hours ago, and... The Finance Committee met on this a couple hours ago at 4:30, and Kathy Bono was there. I believe she said that we didn't need any free cash or reserve to fund this, but it was about 1.4 million. We satisfied this earlier in the process than we have at other times, so the amount of money that's, you know, retroactive pay is smaller because we've satisfied it, settled it sooner. It's only been nine months. Sometimes we've been into like two years or something.
I thought it was like 2024, but it's FY '25 because it's July 1st. One more question. Where are those extra dollars coming from, then? If it's not coming from free cash or...
I believe they're in their police salary line.
Oh, in their budget already?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. President.
Thank you, Counsel Whitfield. Any other questions from the council? Counsel Davila?
Yep. I got my hand up.
I see it. I will get to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good afternoon, Director Mahoney. It's good to see you. First of all, I'm pleased that this contract was ratified and that an agreement was reached. Just to be clear, this is going all the way up to 2028, correct?
2030 to 28, yes.
Okay. And it says here duration of one-year contract, 7/1/24 to 6/30/25. So that covers that first year?
That's the first year and is followed by a third year, yes.
Okay. So, which leads me to the next question. How long were these guys with our contract for?
I'm sorry?
How long were these guys with our contract?
Their contract ended June 30th of 2024, so they've been without a contract for nine months, 10 months now.
And you say '24, correct?
Yeah, June 30th of '24.
Okay, so, okay. So they've been... I'm sorry. One more again. You said they're living out with our contract for 10 months?
For 10 months, yes. Since July 1 of 2024 to date, they've been without a contract. So it has not been a full year.
Okay, well, I am impressed, Director Mahoney. I really am, that we got this settled relatively quick.
Thank you.
My compliments to you. I just want to say that after speaking to all parties, it seems that an agreement was reached. This is important for our guys, especially in a city like ours. It's a city that we couldn't do this without other police officers. And so have I always said that not only do we have to give them the equipment to do the job... And so have I always said that not only do we have to give them the equipment to do the job, but also the financial tools so that they can continue to support their families, because they too have families, and we all know that. It would be a pleasure to vote for this, and my compliments to you and to SPD and to the union for getting this done relatively quickly. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Davila. Okay, Counselor Brown?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have a quick comment as far as the negotiation process. I think as a city, we really have to even be more aggressive in supporting the police. If you look at the statistics, crime is dropping. As far as the police, they're doing a good job. But if you also look at the stats, we're not able to recruit. I believe we have to now start getting more up to date with certain packages. The package itself, you know, yeah, I figure as, yeah, the police will take it. But I believe that we have to now, when we rethink it, we have to get a lot more aggressive. I'm, you know, I'm definitely going to support it because I do support my police. But I believe we could have done better. We should do better. You know, it's the rising time. If we don't put more money and support into our police now and even modernize it a little bit more, we'll pay for that in the future. So I do commend both sides for working together to get to this. But I do just want to urge the fact that we can do better in supporting our police. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Brown. Counselor Govan?
Thank you, Mr. President. Director Mahoney, what does it mean when our police officers are working without a contract? What exactly does that look like?
So, the terms and the conditions of the previous contract just continue in full force and effect until we've reached a successor agreement, which is what we've been doing. So we've been operating under the terms of the contract that expired on June 30th of '24. And now, if the city council ratifies tonight, we'll be operating under new terms.
Okay, great. And I guess I am concerned that sometimes it does take a long time. I commend you, all of you, right? The union, the police officers, the superintendent for coming to an agreement this quickly. But I know I've been here a couple of times where we've had the officers working on the previous contract a lot longer than 10 months. So I'm wondering if there's a way for us to maybe start negotiations early? I don't know if that's possible, if that's in the language of the contract. In 2028, maybe we could start, you know, looking at it the year before and start having those conversations so that our officers don't have to work, quote unquote, "without a contract", without a current contract, apparently. That's what it means. Just my thoughts. That's what I was, I'm not sure if that's possible. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Govan. Counselor Whitfield?
I just have a, thank you, Mr. President. I just have a quick question. How many bereavement days were there before?
Three.
Three, so now it's five.
Five for spouse or a child.
For a spouse or a child?
Yes, counsel.
Should be a lot more than that, but... And then it says the city will develop an app-based system for distribution of outside details. I really appreciate that. So it's not like any type of favoritism. I don't know if it's favoritism now. I'm not saying that. I'm not putting that in the universe. But just in case there is, that will kind of like eliminate that problem, and it'll be a fair process. So I just wanted to say I do like that part of the agreement, and I definitely support it. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you, Counselor Whitfield. Counselor Allen?
Thanks, Mr. President. Just kind of a summary comment from my standpoint. Having been through a few of these, I agree with Counselor Govan. It was nice to not have as much time lapse between the end of the previous contract and the beginning of this one. I just wanted to acknowledge that the counselors that were in the meeting were Counselor Walsh, Counselor Delgado, Counselor Govan. Not sure. I think I got everybody. And we didn't mention this, but Superintendent Akers was in the meeting. He was remote from, looked like his office. And he, you know, was very supportive of the contract, happy that we were at this point. And I think it's, you know, when you think of him, it's his first contract like this since he's been superintendent. So it's, I think it's probably a good morale booster to get this done and, you know, not have it on the work plan for any longer. So nice job, Mr. Mahoney, in getting this done. There was no angst today. There have been angst and stress about these contracts in the past. There was none. There was none today. It seemed like everybody was happy with the contract on both sides. And kudos to everybody for getting it done. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Allen. Counselor Delgado?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to add to, I said this earlier, but thanks to Bill Mahoney and your team and to the folks on the police union side for getting this done sooner. I know one of the questions that my colleague, Vice President Whitfield, asked, which was about money. And, you know, Counselor Allen mentioned that, you know, we have some money, but I wanted to make sure for the edifice of all of my colleagues, some of that money's, the CFO did say we might have to transfer from other departments later on. Just wanted to make sure that we all understood that, that that was one of the things that happened earlier. But I think the fact that you guys got it done, echo the statements that are going on here. I mean, you know, we need to get this done. We have, to Counselor Brown's comment, I mean, we do have a challenge, not just here in the city of Springfield, but across the state and across this country in terms of recruitment. But not just recruitment. Recruitment is just one piece of it. But then it's the retention of our police officers that's another big piece. So I'd like to make sure that we continue to work to ensure that our guys have what they need to do the job successfully and stay on the job and continue to move up within the ranks here in the city of Springfield. So I am planning to support this. We, excuse me, supported it at the subcommittee level, so thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Delgado. Any other counselors? Okay. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll on... Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Santinello?
Thank you so much. I just want to say, in response to Counselor Brown, who's correct, that, you know, recruiting is becoming a little more difficult. But I think in this latest class, we have 46 people graduating, which is terrific. It's not the 52 they expected, but 46 is there. And I want to commend Counselor Whitfield for following up on the bereavement. I don't believe five days is enough, but five days is a start, and I plan on supporting this.
Thank you, Counselor Santinello. Okay. Seeing no other counselors, Madam Clerk, please call the roll on confirmation of the collective bargaining agreement.
On passage and confirmation, Counselor Curran.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Govan?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Delgado?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Santinello?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Click Bruce?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Perez?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton?
Yes, more than sufficient. CBA is approved. Thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk, item number two, please.
Item two is an honorary street sign in honor of Leo Florian.
Okay. I see, do we have anyone here to speak on this this evening? I see we've got Shane participating remotely, I think. Shane, if you unmute yourself, we'd love to hear from you about this petition.
He's having trouble unmute.
I can see. It's okay, Shane. There's a little bit of noise, people leaving the chamber, so you'll find the button. There you go.
Thank you, whoever helped me with that. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. I just wanted to say, yes, thank you. I'm the one who put the petition up for the honorary street naming for Leo A. Florian for Wendell Place. He has been a 41-year city employee. He has been on our board 36-plus years. He's been our president for 27 years. He's lived on that street his entire life. I couldn't think of anybody more deserving. I want to thank the council for their time. Thank you, President Fenton.
Any counselors wishing to speak on this item? Counselor Walsh?
Mistress Santinello?
Yes, I just want to say that Leo has given his heart and soul to this city for many, many years. And I wanted to say that his mother was a legend in the South End. And I just want to say he's given his heart and soul. And thank you so much for doing that, for the city.
Thank you, Counselor Shane.
Absolutely. And just so you know, Brian, I also had Leonardo da Vinci Park renamed after Angelina Florian. Absolutely. She was a pillar to the South End. And Leo is following her footsteps in an immense way. The South End would not be what it is today without Leo Florian. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Counselor Santinello. Counselor Edwards?
Thank you, Mr. President. And I want to thank Shane and the members of the South End Neighborhood Council, the South End Business Association, and the neighbors for their support of this proposal, name of this street. Leo has become a good friend of mine. He's been very supportive. My political career started in part in the South End. And as many of you as residents of the city have witnessed, a major transformation of this area, including the South End Neighborhood Council, the reclamation of the streets along Main Street, the casino, and the businesses that have been able to survive through COVID and through many years under the tutelage of Leo Florian. We've named a park after his mother because he and his family have been institutions in this neighborhood. And it's with great pleasure that I stand in support of the naming of the street on his behalf and look forward to the actual day that we celebrate such a wonderful figure in our community. He's a good friend. Look forward to seeing him at the GM or later on this week, so...
Thank you, Counselor Edwards. Counselor Walsh?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I echo the accolades that my colleagues have given to Leo Florian, so well-deserved, and to his mother Angie, and to let you know that the Traffic Commission enthusiastically supported this nomination for a street sign.
Counselor Walsh, Counselor Click Bruce?
I just want to thank you, Counselor President. I just want to echo what my colleagues have already said. Leo is Mr. South End. You know, you can't really do anything in the South End unless you go through Leo. It's kind of sort of the same thing we had up in Mason Square with the legendary Raymond Jordan. So it's, you know, it's, these are the things we talk about, community, doing the work without, you know, without necessarily a title, per se. He's done, found his niche and done a lot of great work in connecting the dots. So I'm proud to sponsor this. Leo is a friend, and I look forward to seeing him on Tuesdays or whatever, Wednesdays, when I go down to the South End, to the C-3 meetings. And how you doing, Shane? But yeah, so I look forward to supporting this.
Thank you, Counselor Click Bruce. Counselor Perez?
You know, I'm 100% behind giving this support, and it brings great memories of Barbara Rivera and Leo. It was the connection involving one. So when we needed something in the other side, we met with the other side, and we came as a team, working together for many years, going 40 years back. So, you know, it remind me of Barbara Rivera and Leo, having many meetings at the North End, just for the benefit, when we were having the police riot and all the issues that was going on in the city. DTA, I could mention a whole lot of issues that we worked together. So I'm 100% in support. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Counselor Perez. Counselor Delgado?
Just want to say, what a good person to recognize. I've had the privilege of knowing Leo for over a decade and a half now in many different iterations. Got to meet him at some of the work I did in nonprofits and then working for the mayor before. And just, you know, it was said, he's Mr. South End. I think, you know, he's the mayor of the South End, but he's a person that's like true to his roots. And I would say he's the biggest defender of the South End. And he didn't care who came into the South End. MGM came in, he did not, you know, you heard his voice loud and clear in terms of making sure that the neighborhood got what it deserved. And so kudos to Leo and for everything him and his family have done for the South End, so...
Thank you, Counselor Delgado. Counselor Whitfield?
Thank you, Mr. President. Ditto to what all of my colleagues said. Leo is a wonderful person. He really cares about the South End. I think he's very deserving of this award. Before a long time, I didn't know which one was Shane and which one was Leo. I'm pretty sure, Shane, I called you Leo a couple of times because you guys were always together. And I was just like, hey, Leo? Because that's the name that I knew. So I'm pretty sure I had messed that up a couple of times. So Shane, you might need a street sign after you too because when you're out there doing the work, I also see you just as much. And I know that Leo's probably been doing it longer because he's probably older. But I just wanted to say, great job. Keep it up. And actually got great individuals also working alongside of him and following in his footsteps. And he did the same for his mom. So I just wanted to say I appreciate the work and definitely support this.
Thank you. Counselor Davila?
Thank you, Mr. President. What a fitting tribute to a great man. Leo, as my colleagues have said before, he embodies the South End. He is the South End, and he has really been a staple in the community. I would have to say, Shane, the next thing we need to start working on for when the time is right, to have a statue for Leo in a prominent place in the South End, because it's quite fitting. Leo really shows the passion, the love that he has for the South End. And to truly, like one of my colleagues said, the South End would not be what it is today without him. And that's to be acknowledged. And Leo is one of those people that when you think of Springfield, you think of Leo as a critical person in the community. It would be my honor to vote for this honorary sign. But again, Shane, let's start working on the statue because I'm sure he also deserves it. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Davila. Counselor Allen?
Thanks, Mr. President. Yeah, just echoing what all my colleagues have said. Leo, in addition to the South End, he serves on other boards and he's Civic Association President and I believe he's on the planning board. And it's just, it's not limited to just one role with him. He does a million different things, so... And he does it with sincerity and passion and ownership for his community. So thank you, Leo, for everything you do.
Thank you, Counselor Allen. Counselor Curran?
Just to add my thoughts, Leo is a community builder. He's been a fighter for the South End. He's been a fighter for the city of Springfield, and certainly this is a well-deserved honor.
Thank you, Counselor Curran. And with that, Madam Clerk, I think we can call the roll on this...
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought I had my hand up, Mr. President.
That's okay.
Thank you. Yeah, I had to say something for Leo and for Shane. You know, as everyone knows, I'm in Warday. I'm all the way in Indian Orchard. And we had, one time, we needed a space to use for a fundraiser that we were having for the Indian Orchard Citizens Council. And I went to Shane and, you know, Leo, and they, you know, willingly allowed us to use their beautiful new space, where I bought my first car from the auto place that was there before. And whenever I think about the North, the South End, rather, I think about Leo and I think about Shane. What was said earlier is true. Shane is, I would say, Leo's right-hand man, right? Because he's there all the time, helping. And I truly, truly appreciate this, that you're doing this for him, Leo, Shane, truly appreciate this, that you're doing this for him, Leo, I mean Shane, because, you know, a lot of times, we just think, oh, they're doing a great job. They're doing a good job, but we never say it. So I'm really happy that we're saying it today, and that we're doing something about it. And I'm thinking, one day, we're going to do something for Shane, because you deserve it too. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Govan. Okay. Adam Clerk, please call the roll on approval of the honorary street sign for Leo Florian Way.
On approval, Counsel Curran?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Govan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Delgado?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Santinello?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Click Bruce?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Perez?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Fenton?
Yes, more than sufficient. Street name is approved. Thank you, Adam Clerk. Okay, item number three?
Item number three is 11 Liberty Street Fuel Storage Petition.
Hey, is there anyone here to speak on behalf of this petition? Good evening, gentlemen. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record. All right, you have to turn your microphone on, please. There's a little icon there that you have to press. It's got a human face. There you go. There you go. Sorry about that.
I got to tell you, I'm humbled. Leo Florian is a tough act to follow. True pillar of the community. Thank you, councilors. Thank you, Mr. President. My name is Frank Fitzgerald II. I am here to represent Peter Pan through Opal Real Estate Group. I have Brian McCabe and Joe Costa, oh, Jim Costa, from JF Petroleum. We're requesting a permit to install and operate a 5,000 gallon above-ground storage tank, diesel storage tank, at the Peter Pan Garage at 11 Liberty Street in Springfield.
Thank you. And does this have fire department sign off?
I believe they did, yes.
Any questions from the council on the fuel storage permit? Okay. Counsel Davila?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to be clear, they do have a fire department? Is that correct? Okay.
That is correct.
Any input from the neighborhood councils? Which department?
The Fire Department.
Fire.
Yes, I can hear you.
I'm sorry, my microphone wasn't on for once. Captain Martin, you're here on behalf of the Fire Department. That was the question.
That is correct.
Are there any questions for the Fire Department or the applicant?
I have a particular question for the Fire Department. I just want to make sure that it's okay with the neighborhood council, or that there's, with the consultant at all, or?
Don't know. That's a question for the applicant. Counsel Perez?
Have you been in front of the council at all? Because I was trying to look for a letter recommendation from the council with this project, so we, the council could appropriately address whatever concerns or questions they had.
No, I believe this is the first in, in front of the council, right now.
Okay. I mean, the neighborhood council. Have you been in front of the neighborhood council?
No.
No, they had to sign a letter, or we had to send a letter out to the, to the neighboring residents?
Yes, so.
And that was it, and that was mailed, that was mailed in.
Yeah, I think that's, that's the butters notice.
Yep.
Counsel Perez, your, your mic?
So if there's any concern by the community, ask the questions, raise any concerns, that's the place that should be addressed. You on Liberty right now, so I'm trying to deviate. I think you, you belong to the lower Liberty Council with Gladys Rivera. Have you been in front of them at all?
No, not, not for this permit.
Okay, so I would recommend just for them to go in front of the council at this point, because I'm pretty sure they will have some questions they would like to address. And then it's better as a protocol, so they could get feedback to the, to the, to the community, to myself, how do they feel about the process, and you could explain the process if there's any issue.
Okay, that's fair enough. Thank you, Counsel.
Counselor Whitfield, then Counsel.
Thank you, Mr. President. Are there any diesel storage tanks there now on the property?
I'm sorry, say again?
Are there any storage tanks there currently?
Well, right now, there is a temporary 500 gallon storage tank. There were two 8,000 gallon underground, underground storage tanks that were removed, I believe, 2018. And this is really so Peter Pan can get back to more operational efficiency and reduce their, their fuel costs as well. So they were replacing, I believe, 16,000 square, 16,000 gallons underground with 5,000 gallons above ground.
So they were trying to prevent more hazardous waste by removing the underground storage tank, and just been operating with a 500 gallon temporary tank for now? And so you have to keep refilling that over and over and over again?
Correct.
Okay. And it's there now, and this replacement is going to go in the same spot?
No.
No, where is it going to go?
It's, it'll be to the side of the building. So if you're looking at the building from Liberty Street, it'll be to the left side of the building, about halfway down?
Yeah, halfway down.
Halfway down. And this is all on Peter Pan's property?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, I just don't really understand why it has to go to the neighborhood council to get fuel for their buses. I, I know that ward councilors, because they are ward councilors, like everything to go to the neighborhood council. I don't necessarily agree with that. This is to get business back to operation as business as usual, and to have transportation for people entering and leaving Springfield, and it's on their property. It's not anywhere in the community hazardous to the community. Is there any hazard to the community that I can think of? So I don't necessarily want to hold it up. If it did have to come back next month, is there any damage that would do to the operations of Peter Pan?
Well, financially, they, because they've, they've removed the 500 gallon tank that's offline now. So now they'll, they'll have to go purchase, send the buses to
To gas stations.
They filled up someplace else and pay retail prices as opposed to wholesale.
And that's time, time traveling to get the buses filled and then bring them back and things like that?
And, and the upcharge on, on the fuel, which is pretty significant.
Okay, pretty significant, yeah. Okay. That's all that I really wanted to know. I don't necessarily think it needs to go to the neighborhood council, but that's just me. But thank you for the info.
Thank you, Counsel.
Counsel Perez?
It's not only the concern of going to the neighborhood council. Environmentally, I know there's some questions, because as we are dealing with diesel, that the community will probably ask. So I'd rather feel comfortable to address all those questions environmentally and whatever, and, and see a more concise meeting, the transition of what's going on, because honestly, we don't know. So I feel that my constituents should ask from the environmentally issue to whatever issue with this transaction of this tank. So I am recommending to go back to, to the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Perez. Counsel Davila, but Counsel Davila, before you go, Phil would like to just explain why the applicant wouldn't have been instructed to go to the neighborhood council for this particular petition.
Yeah, just, just to let the council know, this, this particular, the underground storage special permits do not come through my office.
Okay.
So they don't get the same notification. I, I haven't done it in the past for these underground storage tanks, so they, they were not notified to go to the neighborhood council, because it just has not been part of the protocol for these type of special permits, unlike the ones that come through.
Thank you.
Can you follow up on that? Is, following up with Counsel Whitfield said?
Counsel Walsh, one second, please. We're going to, we got Counsel Davila next, and then we'll get right to you, please. Counsel Davila?
I wouldn't mind hearing the explanation, because I didn't quite hear Phil's explanation, if I, to be honest with you.
Sorry, the, the, the special permits for underground storage tanks don't go through my office, unlike the regular special permits for the zoning. The, the underground storage special permits go through the Fire Department. So I'm, so the notification and the kind of the, the email that I send out that recommends you go to the neighborhood council isn't part of this process. It hasn't been in the past, just hasn't been part of the protocol for underground storage tanks. Above ground.
Oh, just go ahead.
Well, again, they both, they both go through the Fire Department and not my office, so I'm not involved in the notification of the neighborhoods. Is that okay? Did you have a question? Okay.
Okay. Counsel Davila?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm sorry, what? Could you say, restate your name again, please?
Yes, Frank Fitzgerald II.
Frank, good to see you. Frank, I, I hear what, what you said, the explanation. I just have a question for you. I'm a little confused. Did you say that the, how many gallons was the tank that was there before?
There were two 8,000 gallon tanks.
Okay. And so they kept replanting them every so often, and this 50,000 tank is going to make things more efficient, correct?
Correct.
Now, if I'm not mistaken, I believe you just said that those tanks were already removed. Is that correct?
Yes.
I have to ask you the obvious question, doing my due diligence. Why did they remove the tanks before we, this humble body, gave a permit?
Oh, he's misunderstanding, I think. Okay. I'm, I'm sorry, I'm.
Why I have to ask you the obvious question in my mind at least?
Yep.
If you have two 8,000 tanks there?
Yep.
Why did they remove those two tanks without securing the permit first? In other words, why did you throw the basket without having a bigger basket?
No, it, it was in 2017, by regulations, they had to cease operations on the underground storage tanks. So, and then they were, since they had to cease operations, they were pulled within a year or so of that. So they've been kind of operating hap, well, not haphazardly, but, you know, without a wholesale tank on site for their buses.
Since 2017?
2017, yes.
Okay, that's eight years.
Yes.
You know, Mr. President, thank you, Frank. Mr. President, I, I, the, this particular institution does great work for the city. The people involved in this are very good to the city. But I have to say that I agree with Counsel Perez. Being consistent with what we do, the people of that neighborhood deserve a chance to be heard. I know people feel differently, and that's okay. At least, this, this is not like it's a 20 gallon thing. There's always a lot of things that could happen under the Fire Department, give its blessing, but I do believe that people should have a listening opportunity to be heard on this issue. Because if I'm going to have a 5,000 tank in my neighborhood, God knows that it's not going to happen. It's just not going to happen. We need, we need to make sure that these people are given the opportunity, and I'm inclined to, to, to agree with Counsel Perez on that. With that being said, I make a motion to send this to committee.
There's a motion made to send to committee. Is there a second?
I haven't spoken.
Seconded by Counsel Perez. Okay, undiscussion on the motion to committee. Counsel Walsh, then Counsel Edwards.
Yes, go ahead. I yield to my seatmate.
Counsel, Counsel, Counsel Edwards?
I just wanted to kind of like give a piece of information regarding the fact that my colleague would ask about why they would take a tank out before. If you've noticed around the city of Springfield over the last several years, you've noticed that many of the gas stations have been doing work to take out their, replace their underground tanks. Many gas stations that had existed in years past have gone out of business because the EPA or the federal government has required them to upgrade those tanks. I believe that that's similar to what happened in this particular situation, is that they are mandated federally to remove these tanks and upgrade them. So those companies who ran gas stations who were profitable, they had to make the choice whether or not to cost of replacing the underground tank with a new, more environmentally friendly version, or in many cases, they went out of business. This is the site of Peter Pan buses that have been operational for years. These tanks, when they were installed many, many years ago, were legal, and they met the environmental standards. They no longer have met the environmental standards. So that would have been the reason why they would have taken them out years before they even came before us to ask for a permit. And typically, the agency that would oversee the grant, the permitting process is the Fire Department. So that was the really the reasons why, like if this had have been a regular business, they would have come before the neighborhood council for looking for if they were opening just a regular store or something. So it wasn't any intention. And what I would suggest as a possibility meeting, in between things, is simply that we maybe we grant the permit with the condition that they do go and meet with the neighborhood council, because even if without it, they, all we would be doing is delaying it. They're going meeting with the council. I don't think what's, the, the council's going to say, no, it's an appropriate site. It's operational. It's been there. The council should, the council deserves courtesy and the respect of being able to know what's going on. But at the same time, how do we balance their, being respectful to the neighborhood council and also keeping a business that's been a good neighbor and community, and a good employer of people in our city, keeping them operational as well? Because this was mandated, and it's taken that many years before they've gotten to the point where, as you can know, if you go back around the time, you know, a number of years ago, the bus station was there. Now its wave finders is there. But Butter Pan Buses was operational behind there where they were storing their buses. We built a new thing by Union Station, announced now the hub for that. And I believe recently, they took and have a new facility out on Cottage Street, I believe it is, that they're operating as well, or that's PVTA, which is also downtown. But the stand, I just wanted everybody to be aware that one of the reasons that they would have taken these tanks out years ago before coming for the, with the plan to build a new one, was because it was mandated. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Edwards. Counsel Walsh?
The green light here. Green light for the buses. You know, I think there's a balance here. I can understand the neighborhood council, but you know, we also have to be business friendly, and this isn't new. And they've, they've fulfilled all their requirements. They're not required to go to the neighborhood councils for this. They only have to get the okay of the Fire Department. And I believe Counsel Whitfield brought this up, that yes, I think you have a wonderful solution, grant it, and then have them go, but it won't make any difference what the neighborhood council says, because they only need the permission of the Fire Department. So I, I can't support the move to committee, because I think not only do we take care of our neighborhoods, we also have to be business friendly. And the city council has a reputation for being hard on businesses, and I don't think that's the reputation we want.
Okay, thank you. We got a couple of councilors who want to be heard, but we got a couple of councilors who haven't been heard from yet, who are waiting to be heard. Counsel Govan?
Thank you, Mr. President. I agree with Counsel Walsh and Counsel Edwards, and Vice President Whitfield, that, you know, moving forward, this type of permit does not need to go to the neighborhood councils. I remember that when we had, it was the similar sort of situation where they, they had to put tanks there for fuel, I believe, on Berkshire Avenue. And I remember that they did not have to come to the neighborhood council to let the neighbors know, because it was kind of like, it was said, you know, it's a mandated, EPA mandates that they upgrade the tanks. So I think that we should, you know, give them grace, and I think they should go if they want to hear the neighborhood, the neighbors in the neighborhood want to hear from them, maybe arrange a meeting and have them ask questions. But as was said, this is a mandate by the, you know, the EPA to upgrade and to make sure that they're as safe as possible. So I think that we should grant the permit and then have the neighborhood ask their questions if they have any. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Govan. Counsel Brown?
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I would have to agree with Counselor, I would have to agree with sending it to a committee. I know as far as, I, I'm familiar with Peter Pan. I have a great relationship. They're great to the city. And it, to me, I know in the past, they were very active. Lately, as the last, as years came on, I, I haven't really seen them in the, in our areas as much. When it be as far as like the different community, the elderly centers and things like that. I know like the Central Girls' Basketball Team, they went on a, a yellow school bus all like five miles up the road for their state championship. So I know in the past, they used to be a little bit more friendly when it came to that, they, that stuff. I would think as a neighbor, a good neighbor, which they are great neighbors, they would already had the open communication. I think that would have been the first thing they would have done. We already had an incident in our city where we had a huge explosion. Okay? So all those people who were affected by that explosion comes from Springfield. When we're talking about why they have to repair that, because they find that it's faulty now, I can guarantee you, if you ask them, or you ask anyone, common sense, 20 years from now, 25 years from now, the people, what is it going to look like then? When the kids and our kids, what, I mean, what, is it, it's going to deteriorate? What is the rate of deterioration? How long does it take? Those are serious questions. Though, that isn't just, where they're not just putting up park benches out there. That isn't just, where they're not just putting up park benches out there. This is very serious material. I want to support them. I don't see how it's that hard for them to say, hi, neighborhood council, this is what we're doing. I know, you know, we did have a big explosion and everything. It has nothing to do with that. This won't deteriorate until a rate of 20 years. We won't have to repair this 40 years because there is a life shelf for even that tank. So those are questions. Those are things that are being put right in people's areas. And I believe that they should have the right to at least say, hi, guys, this is what I'm doing. And to not do it just because they didn't do it in the past is still a overstep on our part. Because I believe that the neighborhood, we represent the neighborhood. I know I would want to know. My mother would want to know. Everybody I know would want to know. So as far as the neighborhood councils, we have people who would have some questions. And to be a good neighbor like they are, I don't see nothing wrong. Give them the opportunity to come and say hi. Reintroduce yourself to the neighborhood councils and say hi. Give you a chance because when's the last time you've been to one? And reintroduced, let's be great, just say hi, let everybody know what you're doing. And then I don't see anything wrong with it. And then now let's continue. But to do not talk to the neighborhood, I believe that that's not being a good neighbor. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor.
Mr. President, if I must, just to clarify a few things if I can. First off, I think Mr. McCabe can speak to the type of tank that's there and its longevity. And my understanding is, I'm not sure what explosion you're talking about, but we're dealing with, this is diesel fuel, which really is flammable, definitely, but it's not explosive like, you know, more gasoline or natural gas. So I'm going to leave it to Brian to kind of explain the tank itself so you have a better idea of what's being put there.
Please.
So what's being installed is a double wall steel tank. We install these all over the country. We're based out of Webster, Mass, our company, but we do this all over the country. They're taking out UST tanks, which are underground storage tanks, because of the environmental risks. The above-ground tanks basically take away all that risk. You can see everything in sight. So if there was an issue, you would see it, you know? The tanks go for about 20 years. Again, it's all mandated. The second the lifespan happens, we have to basically, you know, report that. The fire department has all the records. They'll have everything. And as soon as the life expectancy starts happening, we start the process and move forward with something else.
Thank you. Counselor Kern?
Welcome to the City Council Attorney Fitzgerald. And my ten cents is I do support Maria Perez's initiative to move to the neighborhood councils. I do think that neighborhood councils deserve at least a chance to express their voice in this matter, even though it's not required. We just got done with a previous issue of we named a street after our neighborhood counselor, Leo Florian. And what is the point of the neighborhood council but to be the, you know, voice of the neighborhood? And so I do think Maria has a great point. I do think a 5,000 gallon diesel oil tank is something that the neighborhood councils should hear about in person, not just simply read about it in that the city council passed it in the newspaper the next day. That said, Peter Pan has been a great corporate partner here in the city forever. And it's great to hear that you're doing well enough that a 5,000 gallon diesel tank is needed because the buses are going to be going up and down the Mass Pike and up and down the East Coast. So obviously, when it gets before us, I do support it. But I think Maria is absolutely right. I mean, the North End deserves a voice. They deserve the respect to hear the explanation of why this is going to go in the neighborhood and hear the ins and outs of that. This council always asks to send something to a neighborhood council, whether it's a curb cut or even expand hours. And on every issue that goes before us, even small matters, this is not a small matter. It's a 5,000 gallon diesel tank. So I do support Maria's motion, and I think it's merited.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Kern. Counselor Perez. Then Counsel. Okay, would you yield to Counselor Whitfield?
Yes, I would do your two.
Counselor Whitfield.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Counselor Perez. Just wanted to clarify a couple of misnomers that were said. Number one, this is not a normal procedure that goes to the neighborhood council. As Phil said, as Counselor Govan said, we don't normally send these matters to the neighborhood council. That was said earlier. That is not true. I do think that Peter Pan could be good neighbors and go talk to the Liberty, I think it's Liberty Heights or Metro, one of those. It's not the North End. It's one of those neighborhood council to just be good neighbors overall, not just for this tank. Then number two, it was the Mass DEP in 2017 because I looked it up when, because I don't take anybody's word for anything. I looked it up when Counselor Edwards was saying it. It was in 2017 that it was mandated that the underground, whatever you said, steel thing, storage tanks that were underground had to be removed. So that's why they removed the two eight thousand, eight thousand, which equals 16. So they're asking for considerably smaller tank than what they had before. But they were good stewards and they were good business people. And they did remove the underground storage tank as was mandated to do so. So those are two things. Third thing, you know, my old age always leaves me on the third thing. I can't quite remember that. And I don't think that they're not being respectful because they were never even told to go to the neighborhood council. I think that they also still have an opportunity to go to the neighborhood council, like Counselor Edwards said. But why would we hold them up? Like if they come back, are we going to deny them? Are we going to deny them today because they didn't go to the neighborhood council? That's not being good city councilors, in my opinion, when this is a need. They've been, they're going to have to go back and forth. They're going to have to pay more money. It's going to cause delays with the bus company because they're going to have to go somewhere and get the gas and come back and then start their routes. I don't think that makes clear sense to me. And so I just wanted to clarify those things. Oh, I know what the final point was with the gas explosion. That happened because a gas company employee went to check a line, punctured the gas line, and that's how the explosion happened. It did not happen because of any type of diesel tank or anything like that. It was in 2012, and an employee accidentally punctured the gas line, which caused the explosion. So I just wanted to clarify some of those points. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Whitfield. Counselor Perez?
I just want to say that I went through a fire last year, a big building. And if you don't know the demographic of the North End, we have PVTA on Main Street with all those fumes. And I heard my constituents, we are sick and tired of the fumes and we have to live with the fumes. And then we have a Liberty that is almost in the middle of the North End. So it's very, it's a unique composition where I have all these buses coming and fueling and going up and down. And I just want the assurance of my constituents that God forbid that we went through the fire that went last year in the building annexed to New North Citizen Council. And we was praying because we knew there was fumes in the air with this big fire. I think for my constituents, we're not talking about a bench. We're not talking about, we're talking about diesel. And what is the impact? And I'm not the professional, and my constituents are not, but they would like to have some assurance. Right now, from the position that you are informing us that you're going to change that, I got a whole housing unit next to it. So I would like to hear from my community how unfairness, how do they feel? And have some assurance that they're not going to go through the traumatic issues that we went last year with that big building on fire on Main Street. So I'm not even basing it on the protocols, going back to the neighborhood. I'm basing it, what if? And I want to eliminate those if with my community so they could feel that there's no hassle harm being done. Simple, it's like that. So it's having assurance of human life, that they're going to be assured that there's the possibility. What happened regardless who did it in this city, it was very traumatic. So think about my neighborhood having one station on Main Street, PVTA, and then having this other station. And when we had that fire, we were so, so concerned about the matter. So please consider we're talking about not having a bench or having something. We're talking about making assurance of the human life of the people that live in that ward. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Counselor Perez. Counselor Allen?
Thanks, Mr. President. I wasn't going to speak on this, but I decided after hearing all the back and forth. You know, I just think that it's so easy to go to the neighborhood council or the civic association. It's not hard. And it should, there's something to be said for local control and local respect for neighborhood councils and civic associations that they get to hear, things that might be approved for their ward or being considered. So if it was a hard thing to do, it'd be one thing. It's so easy to do, and it hardly ever will get stopped. But there's an element of respect for people and for neighborhoods that I think is, that comes out of that. As someone who has three neighborhood councils in my ward, and I go to all their meetings for 15 years, and I have great respect for the work they do. And I just don't think it's a lot to ask for things to go to the neighborhood council. They're not trying to stop things, just want to be in the loop. And that's, so I'm going to support the move to committee. And I think, you know, Maria has made a pitch here for her neighborhood, for her people. She cares a lot about her community. That's one of her things that she talks about a lot. And, you know, I'm going to support her on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Allen. Counselor Govan, and we'll get to Counselor Davila.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, you know, I agree that it does, it's not a really big deal to go to the neighborhood council. Right now, it sounds like, you know, some councils are trying to kind of instill fear, right? Bringing up the gas explosion that was ever sourced. It was not Peter Pan. The place where it's going to be is going to be on Liberty Street in basically kind of like downtown Springfield. I don't think there's any residents that live there or any apartment buildings on that side, to my knowledge. So I'm just, I'm just, I just want us to be cautious. Of course, you know, going to the neighborhood council is a good thing. I'm the president of our neighborhood council. We want to know everything that's happening in our neighborhood. There's some times that they just send us a notice, and this is going to happen, and this is what's going to happen and why. So sometimes there's nothing we can do about it. But I want us to be cautious about stirring up fear for people when it's not necessary because, you know, that can have an impact on businesses, you know? And to say that Peter Pan has not been helpful to our community, I think, are they still having free PVTA buses? They're getting, I know that's not Peter Pan, but that's a part of it, right? So I think doing that, I know that Peter Pan, you know, helps us when we call and ask for possible rides for some of the youth, they're responsive. So we just have to be really cautious, I think, you know, to stir up some, I don't know, fear when there's really no need for any. That's just my comments. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Govan. Counselor Davila?
Thank you, Mr. President. I do have a clarifying question for Phil, if I may, Mr. President.
Sure. Phil? Phil's the next petitioner, so he's been going back and forth between the back and the front.
You getting your workout today, Phil, aren't you? Phil, just a clarifying question. Are we talking about 5,000 gallons or 50,000 gallons? Because I suddenly heard 5,000 twice.
Yeah, I believe it's 5,000. It's 5,000.
It's 5,000?
Yeah.
Okay. So then, Frank, thank you, Phil. So Frank, if I may, sir. Again, so I know this is a mandate 2017. Eight years has gone by. Now you guys doing this, good. But I did ask you a little while ago if they were going to be more efficient. Help me understand how having a 5,000, and I know it's mandated, it needs to be done, but I just want to pick your brain. Why did you say that it was going to be more efficient? Because you have 16,000 gallons now, 8,000 plus 8,000, 16,000. Now you have 5,000, that's less gas gallons. How is that more efficient, Frank?
Well, the 5,000 gallons, they can get a better rate than they do now.
Better rate of the gas?
For the gas, yes. And to be fair, I think if they could reproduce the 16,000 gallons, they probably would. But I don't think that's really in the cards for that site. And I think, you know, 5,000 gallons is a reasonable amount for what they need to, at least for their operations. So.
Okay. Thank you, Frank. Mr. President, if I, I have to say that this has been good back and forth, and I hear what they say. If you allow me through the chair to Ms. Perez, I would like to say, Ms. Perez, you are not still in fear. You're advocating for your neighborhood, and it makes a little sense to me. That's what you're supposed to do. So my respects and kudos to you, ma'am, for standing up for your neighborhood. If it was my neighborhood, I would be equally as aggressive. And I know that there's no set of protocols. But this, as a humble body, traditionally sends things to the neighborhood council. I personally like to be as consistent as possible. I've always tried to send things, as far as I know, to the neighborhood. Now, where I'm getting hooked on this big time is, one, why did you guys remove it? Now, you had years. Send this to committee to give the respect that the neighborhood deserves, the least that we can do. It's not going to put anybody out of business, especially an institution like this, which I'm very thankful and I support. But I also have to look at the totality of the picture, not just one person, who regardless of who it is. I would also like to say that in that area, so you have 91 North, East Columbus, the Republican newspaper, it's right there with a walking distance. Okay, Six Brecks, thank you. Six Brecks, which is a very good business in the area owned by a young, brave minority woman. You have Wayfinders. If that alone of itself is no reason to, just do extra diligence. I mean, the devil can sit here in front of me and tell me that it's going to be okay. Frank, I'm not calling you the devil, by the way. Please don't make that assumption. Well, I'm sorry. I'm going to do my due diligence. And if it takes an extra month, a month and a half, then so be it. Okay? I really wish I could pass this today, but I'm really getting hooked up into the tanks we removed before the permit was issued. I find that that is a slight to the neighborhood. And my beloved colleagues, as much as respect, I have a lot of respect for all of you. I do believe that we owe the deference to the board of City Council, Maria Perez. And she's asking this to send to committee, which should send it to committee out of deference to the position and to the people that she represents in one way. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Davila. Counselor Delgado, did you still want to be heard?
I've heard my colleagues go back and forth on it and definitely have strong arguments on both sides. I think the strongest one I heard though was from Counselor Edwards to say, let's approve this and let's, I guess, nobody's asked them the question. We've all assumed that they don't want to go, but they weren't asked to go. So I guess I'm going to ask you, if we were to approve this tonight, would you be willing to go down to the neighborhood council to ensure that they know everything that's going on there? Because I think it's fair to say that putting a new 5,000 gallon, you know, that they should be notified of that. But I also think that, you know, if they weren't told, if these folks weren't told to do that, and this is something that they were operating already previously on this land, and I'm not saying just because it was there means they can do whatever they want, continue. But they're not changing anything that wasn't already. But they're, they're not changing anything that wasn't already there. So I think if you're willing to go to the council, to the neighborhood council, and if we approve this tonight, I think that satisfied, at least for me, that the council's gonna get their, their due diligence to be heard on that and be notified. And I've, what I'm, from what I thought I heard earlier was the fact that you guys did put out in a butter's letter, so all the businesses and organizations around were notified of this, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So I just wanted to make sure, I thought I heard that. So, yeah, and I think we're going around in circles and circles. At the end of the day, you know, something that's been operating there, if they're willing to go, I don't see the issue to not vote on it today. So that's just my two cents.
I'd like to say that I, 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 I agree with, uh, Council Perez and Council Davila that, you know, the neighborhood council should be notified. My apologies, it really isn't part of this special permit process that, at least is, is, is what we deemed it to be. But, um, in answer to your question, uh, Council Delgado, I think that Council Edward's suggestion, um, is, is a fair one. And we are absolutely would love to schedule a meeting with the neighborhood council and inform them of what it's like. Actually, they can come, welcome to see, see it in place too, if they want.
We got several people who wanna be heard. I'm trying to keep track. Let's, is it okay if we go with Council Click Bruce? He hasn't been heard yet. Is that okay? Council Click Bruce.
Thank you, uh, Council President. I, I just really wanna touch upon the process, uh, cause I think that's huge for us as a body to, to get a process in place that it checks and balances out. As like, uh, as, uh, Phil mentioned earlier, that they're not necessarily required to go to, to whoever. Like, if, they're only required to go to the fire department, right, for this? So how can we, I guess I'm just asking a question, not to necessarily be answered now, but how can we work on, uh, looking at the processes so that this wouldn't, uh, come up and, and be, be, uh, a negative on them who actually went through the process that they were told to do? And, you know, we're asking all these questions as if they, they did something wrong. And I'm, and I'm gonna go with my colleague, uh, yeah, I'm a ward counselor, but I, I don't consider myself a ward counselor. I, I help out wherever, wherever I'm needed. But in, in, in that vein, um, when you go to these neighborhood councils, they're gonna question the ward counselor as if you didn't know what was going on. So I just wanna speak on behalf of that, not kinda, not going here nor there. I hear both sides. Everybody's making great points. Definitely don't wanna hold them up, but I, I understand where, where the question kind of arises. But just to go back, they did it, they, they did all they were told to do. And they're willing to, to, to go to the, to the neighborhood council. So I just want to rest there. I'm, I'm just listening to what everybody else have to say. I just want to be on the record of saying that we as a council have to, to look at all, all these processes and these policies and make changes where we see fit. Thank you, our Council President.
Thank you, Council Click Bruce. Councillors, we're gonna hear from Council Perez, then Council Brown, then Council Walsh, then Council Davila. I wanna remind councillors, or just point out, we've been at this for almost an hour. All councillors except Council Santinello have been heard from. Many councillors have been heard from three times or two times. Council Perez.
You know, I'm not opposed for the records of the process. But if you have a ward that went through a big fire and, and those was the concerns that what my constituents were reflecting in the dynamic of having so many buses going down Main Street, parking on Main Street. I mean, environmentally, I would like to have, ask all the constituents some questions. How this affect us? Because right now, you saying you had 8,000 gallons, and now it's gonna be 5,000 gallons, correct? Okay, from 16. So the why of that, I mean, it's EPA, but this many concerns. I'm not opposed of the process, but I hear my colleague, Bruce. We as city council, we have a responsibility with the community that, that we serve. And at least we have to put a process in place, because if I would have helped you put a community meeting and explain that, I mean, hear me, we had a big, a big, big fire last year. Um, and we went through that traumatic, and those was the questions asked. And now environmentally, I'm not an expert, but we sure enough could have some other independent people on the table that could answer some questions. So I'm not against of the process. I am willing, because it's my ward, to say, yes, let's pass it with some condition that if we don't sit with the community, I don't know what the community is gonna ask, or who should we have at the table that could assure us that everything is perfect. It's in a private property, but when an explosion come, it doesn't affect only the private property. It, it affects everyone that is surrounded. But yes, we have to, at least to the city council, be informed of a situation like this one. Because guess what? We approve it today, and guess who they're gonna be calling? Me, and, and screaming at me as the ward representative. So that's why I was concerned and animated that the community should hear from this. Because, uh, it looks as simple, because you guys are the expert. But we have to assure my community that it's no, no risk factor of having a project like this one. So I would like, um, Mr. President, I don't have no objection that it passes, but that the community should hear. And I think we, we should start having a precedent when it comes to, um, process, um, like this one. Because it does not only affect the private property, it's not a private property issue, it is a community issue. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you, Council Perez. Council Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I wanna commend, uh, Council Perez, um, in her fight for the, for her district. I, I, I think what, what we all have experienced throughout our time is that, uh, sometimes there's miscommunication between us and the different departments. And this gives us a chance to now, um, correct it as we go. I don't believe that we should continue on, um, on a process, just like with Eversource. Um, and now they give us more communication in their processing. So for, um, us to say, hey, okay, you, you know, I, and I, and I'm not saying Peter Pan, they did not know. But I believe that the city, um, we should be in communication. You know, as far as with the neighborhood council, they, they've had, um, numerous meetings with the city. And I would think any entity from now on, not even from now on, period, we should set a precedent. Any entity meeting wanna meet with the city, it means the city and, um, the actual residents. We are the city council, we represent the residents of the city, we're now the neighborhood council. I think that would just be common knowledge. So I believe that should be precedent, uh, precedent set regardless. It does not take any effort to come down and say hi. With that in mind, I had a question with the guy who said about, who, who had the specs on the actual tanks. Is he still there?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Now, when you say, uh, they last around 20 years, correct? I can't hear.
Sorry, yes, correct.
And, uh, what are things, uh, what are issues that might happen, um, that, 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 that could happen in, uh, say, in year 18, if there was an issue?
So first of all, you have to have, um, you have to have environmental testing, um, every three years.
Okay.
So every three years gotta be tested, and it's gotta be tested by a third party. So it's not even tested by the installers, we have to have a third party test it. And there's several leak detections on a tank. So that's a double wall tank, you have a, you have the, um, primary, um, leak detection, and then you also have a second wall leak detection.
Uh, but as far as, uh, a, a, after the three years, uh, they have, they had that, they do it every three years, because there had to be statistically, um, there had to be a false, um, foul, event, some, somehow, and, 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 and in some of their systems throughout existence. Is that why they would do it every three years? Because it could, it could be a possibility that there could be a leak, correct?
No, that's not, that's, no, that's false. No.
So it's, I, so I'm, I'm, I, what, that, that's what I'm, that's what people would kinda wanna know. Can it leak? Why do they come, why would they come in and, and have to check it every three years? Like, what's the safety specs on it? It, is what I think the community people would be curious on. That's why I would say you guys would probably wanna talk to the community, cause I don't know this stuff. I don't think none of my colleagues, um, know it. So you said, what could happen in three years? Nothing could happen in three years? It's 100% fail state for three years? They just come in and inspect just because they have to?
Well, they got.
Hey, I'm Jim Cust. Um, they're tested every three years because of the EAP federal regulations. That's why they're tested every three years. This comes all from EAP federal regulations.
Because it could be a possibility, a possibility, right? Within a three-year period, it could be safety issues where based on the EPA, it would require you now to go and check within a three-year period of time, because there could be safety issues. Or, or you're saying, no, that's not why you're going to check within three years?
Oh, so that's what the EPA comes up with. They have to come up with something. So they've come up with that test regulation, cause that's all over the state, not just Springfield, that's all over the state. So somewhere, that's somewhere whoever.
Has ever, it, has ever in existence, they went three years, ever in existence, three years went and checked, and, and they never found a leak.
Well, I can't speak, I can't speak for never. I can't, I can't speak, no, I can't speak on that. But.
Well, no, no.
But to your point, to your point though, you could have, you could have it tested every year. That's just what the state requires. That doesn't mean, that doesn't mean the customer can't have it tested every year.
So it can leak, is what you're saying, correct?
Well, anything can leak, right? Your, your, your gallon of milk you buy from the grocery store could leak.
And what is actually leaking out of that? Milk?
First of all, it would have, it, first of all, it would have to leak from several points, from several points. It would, you know, these are, these are, these are, these are factory-made tanks. They get tested when they leave a tank facility. I don't know how to explain it, really. I mean, it's, these go all over the country. We're not the only ones that have ever installed this. These are what, these are, these are what, believe it or not, this is what the gasoline industry's moving to. They are getting away from underground storage tanks, and they're actually going to ASTs.
Because they found, because they found through their studies that they were harmful. So now, and do they have, even now in their studies, they find that it's good to check every three years, because it might leak, it might leak every year. So it might leak, and it's not gonna just leak milk, it's gonna leak gas. Now, I understand.
Not gonna leak gas, it'll leak diesel.
Diesel, yes.
It'll leak diesel, yep.
Yes. So these are, you know, these are things now, when you're saying, hey, we're gonna put this up, um, and it might leak diesel now here and then, um, but we, 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 it usually doesn't, you know? I understand that it's safe. I under, I'm not condemning the process, I'm all in for it, um, as far as what you guys are doing. I'm just saying it's good to kinda like answer these questions when people have concerns. I mean, I definitely will support it, but I do believe that you should talk to the neighborhood, because these things aren't, we're not just talking about, uh, milk and cookies. And I commend Council Perez for having concerns, um, just to get some answers. I mean, it's not that I'm not gonna support it, I definitely am gonna support it. I just believe that, you know, it doesn't take anything to go and talk to the neighborhood council. And I'm always for money on the wood make the game go good, you know? So as far as doing it after, you know, it really, you know, I, I believe it's the city's back on, on not having the process in place with something this serious, as far as them even telling the neighborhood, you know, telling the individual to go to the neighborhood council. Thank you. Um, and I commend you, Council Perez. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council Brown. Council Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I'm gonna short speech, and then please call the question. You know, I don't think there's anybody on this council that doesn't respect neighborhood councils and their input. But the other side of that is, you have to follow the rules. We're talking about a federal mandate. Now, if there's an issue, the only permission they needed was from the fire department. They got that permission. I don't think it's fair to hold them up for doing what they're supposed to be doing. I think this should be passed, and then there should be a meeting. And please call the question.
Okay. Speaking of the rules, we can't call the question after you talk, can't do that. But I'm gonna enforce a rule that's very rarely enforced, and if you've spoken twice already, you're not speaking anymore on this subject. You've spoken twice, is there anybody else that would like to speak? You spoke three times. Well, at least twice. So twice is the rule, not three times. Any councillors who haven't been heard from, or who haven't spoken twice that wanna speak? Council Curran.
Just to crystallize it, I, Maria's simply asking to give the neighborhood council the north end a voice, the residents of the north end a voice, and, uh, the, the councillor who represents the north end a voice. I don't think that's too much to ask, it's something that I'll support. Obviously, I support, uh, the idea of you updating your tanks, I certainly support it. Peter Pan's been a great corporate partner here. But the residents of the north end do deserve a voice. I don't think it's that major of a thing to have, uh, the representatives in the general council of Peter Pan bus go into the new north citizens council. Uh, we would require that of, uh, a pizza shop, why not Peter Pan? Again, this is about giving the residents of the north end a voice and giving the north end citizens council a voice. And I think Maria's right to advocate and fight for that. It's not major, so I, it's a two-week, three-week, four-week delay. Peter Pan's been around for seven, 100, almost 100 years, 70 years. So it's not gonna be a major thing, but it's a major thing in, in, in the, in the north end. I don't think it's good if we show up at a meeting and say, hey, hey, this is what it's all about, but we already voted on it. So your voice really doesn't count. Uh, so I, I would disagree with that line of thinking. Vote for it, then tell, inform the residents. I don't think they should be hearing about it, uh, in the newspaper. I think they should be hearing it from the representatives of Peter Pan. And I think once they hear about it, I think they're gonna support it. Uh, but at least they should have to hear about it. They shouldn't be left out of the process. That's what we're here for, is to represent them. So, uh, again, I would echo Kader's point, let's move this along after that. Thank you.
Okay. Any other councillors? Any other councillors? Okay. So there's a motion made by Council Edwards. It was to send the matter to committee, and it was seconded by Council Perez. Oh, Council Davila, excuse me, Council Davila, uh, seconded by Council Perez. Instead of making it a motion to committee, would you consider amending your motion to be a motion to continue? Because there isn't really a committee that would appropriately meet on this subject. Would you consider amending that to be a motion to continue to our next meeting?
Uh, Mr. President, it's a, a good thought, but is that gonna be May 19th?
It would be May 12th.
May 12th, and that will effectively keep it on the table, keep it.
It'll put it on the agenda on the 12th, yeah.
Sure, I think that's a pretty, uh, good compromise. And I'm sure I'd be to here and there that the representative could meet with the neighborhood council. Will you agree to the chair with Ms. Perez?
Is that possible?
Well, I have to, because I'm, I'm unique, I got three councils in my neighborhood. This one is the Liberty, so, um, I have to see the geographic.
Metro.
This is Metro Center.
It's Metro?
Metro.
Okay, so, um, I will, I will, I will contact best, best Johnson and, um, and put a meeting together. And I, I will speak after.
Sure.
Okay. So you're okay with making it a motion?
With that, with that, I say I have no, no objection with amending, uh, the most, the, the motion from Senate Committee to continue into the next meeting.
Okay. And that's okay with you too?
Second.
Okay. Motion made and seconded. I did let Council Perez talk again after she spoke for a fourth time. So would you like to speak again, Council Whitfield? Okay. Any other councillors? Madam Clerk, please call the role on the motion to continue the matter to May 12th.
On the motion to continue, Council Curran.
Yes.
Yes, Council Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Council Govan? No, Council Walsh? Yes, Council Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Council Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Council Brown? Yes, Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Delgado?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Santanello?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Click Bruce?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Perez?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Fenton?
No, more than sufficient. Matter is continued to May twelfth. Okay, Madam Clerk, item number four, please.
Item four is a zone change, uh, amending Article Eight, Section eight point four, flood plan overlay district.
Uh, the petitioner is the Springfield Planning Board, so we have Mr. Dromy here tonight. Uh, this is a zone change petition, so, uh, it is subject to our normal hearing rules. We'll offer the applicant up to twenty minutes, hopefully not all of that, Phil, to make his case. And then if there's anybody else wishing to speak in favor, we'll hear from them. If there are opponents to the zone change petition, then we'll also hear from them. Uh, Mr. Dromy.
Yeah, good evening. Phil Dromy, Deputy Director of Planning for the Office of Planning and Economic Development, and I'm hoping this is much quicker. I, I'm really here kind of on a, a, more of a housekeeping matter. Um, I was informed several months ago, probably more than that now, by the, by the, uh, Management Flood Plane Specialist from the Massachusetts Department of, um, Conservation and Recreation, that our current flood plane district ordinance, which is on the books now, is, is not in full compliance with the new FEMA regulations and the, uh, National Flood Insurance Program requirements. Um, again, the, the flood, the, the flood plane overlay district is a district that controls construction within, uh, what is designated by FEMA for special flood plane areas within the city. This is not to be confused with wetlands. It has nothing to do with wetlands. Wetlands are controlled by the Conservation Commission. Flood plane, uh, the flood planes are controlled by FEMA, and those are all identified on the, uh, the FEMA maps that are put out and, and updated periodically. Uh, Springfield itself, this, I, I, this is a section that I'm not overly familiar with because, you know, when I was back here twenty years ago on the third floor, whenever you had to buy your house, you had to come to the planning department. We actually used to have to make copies of the flood plane maps to show that you were in the, or not in a flood plane. If you were in Zone X, you were outside the five hundred-year flood plane. And in all those maps that I copied, I never found a property that was in the flood planes. There are areas, uh, in the city that are, um, obviously the north end is a big one, but because that is protected by the levee, it's not considered to be in a flood plane. So there's very few properties that kind of trigger this. So it's not a, it's not an ordinance that's used a lot. Um, but it does control construction within flood planes. So if you were to, if you were building in a flood plane, you would have to go through this special permit process in order to do that. Um, so there were some amendments to the definitions, um, and kind of an overall update of, of the outline for the development regulations, um, uh, requirements to submit new data, um, and also the outlining of the variants for building codes and flood plane, uh, standards. So again, this is really just, uh, a housekeeping matter to bring this, the existing flood plane overlay district up to date with the, with the regulations or in compliance with the National, um, Insurance Program. So, um, I'm not sure if anybody's got any specific questions, but I'm happy to answer what I can. Uh, just for the, for the note, it, it's, the building commissioner is actually considered the flood plane district administrator. So if you were building in the flood plane, you would start with him.
Thank you, Phil. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of the petition, in person or online? Say again, anyone wishing to speak in favor of the petition? Seeing none, that closes this portion of the hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition, in person or online to this zoning petition? Say again, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none. Questions from the council for Mr. Dromy? Counsel Whitfield? Oh, I thought you did. Okay, so any other, any counselors with questions for Mr. Dromy? Okay, seeing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Two-thirds majority is required.
An approval, Counsel Curran?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Govan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Davila? Away, Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Delgado?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Santanello?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Click Bruce?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Perez?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Fenton?
Yes, more insufficient. Zone change is approved. Any more business, Madam Clerk?
No, there's not.
Okay, council will stand adjourned until May twelfth. Uh, this meeting is adjourned.